All right, welcome to the March 14th Regular Business Meeting. I have a motion to call the meeting to order, please.
So moved.
So moved, Linda, second. Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
And now I have a motion to move into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing a student disciplinary matter.
So moved.
So moved, Jen, second. Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
We will be back.
Welcome back to our March 14th Regular Business Meeting.
I have a motion to move out of Executive Session and into Public Session, please. So moved, Jen, second. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I need a motion to amend the agenda to add a student disciplinary appeal, please.
So moved.
So moved. Linda, second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I need a motion to uphold the superintendent's decision on the student disciplinary matter as discussed during Executive Session. So moved, Charlie?
In a second.
Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed? None. Thank you. All right, moving on to our student liaison reports.
I'm glad we could all make it here despite the terrible weather outside. So to start, Triumph Coffee House, so Triumph Music Honor Society is hosting its annual Coffee House on Friday, March 24th at 7:00 PM. Performers who went through an audition process will showcase their talents in the library for anyone that has a soft spot for music. There will be baked goods and coffee available for the audience to enjoy as well. Tickets will be sold at the door by Triumph members. On Thursday, March 9th, juniors and seniors were inducted into the World Language Honor Society. They earn this honor by staying in a language class throughout high school and by maintaining an average of 90 or above. The students read an oath in their respective languages and then enjoyed refreshments with their friends and families. Congratulations to all inducted and thank you to everyone who helped organize and run the ceremony. The Student Council is hosting a Spring Fling Dance on Thursday, March 7th in the school cafeteria. There will be snacks, drinks, and amazing decorations. The cafeteria will be filled with vines, flowers, and lights to make the perfect garden vibe for the dance. Tickets will be sold the week of the dance and at the door for $5. We are excited to host our first Spring Fling since COVID. Schrader will be celebrating mental health support the last week of March. One Warrior Week will be filled with fun and relaxing events like a ping pong tournament, a chess tournament, and Senior Switch Day, where a senior can be their favorite teacher for a class period. The week is run by Sources of Strength, a national suicide prevention initiative that has its own chapter at Schrader. We are excited to hear more news about the upcoming week. St. John Fisher University hosted its annual Teddy Dance for Love, which is a 24-hour dance-a-thon that benefits Camp Good Days in special times, an organization for children and families dealing with cancer and other significant life challenges. This event was a National Honor Society-sponsored initiative that allowed both potential and current members to receive volunteer hours based on how long they attended. Many members came out to support the wonderful cause and spent the night dancing with friends and playing fun games. It has been quite an exciting few weeks for Schrader Athletics. First off, congratulations to the varsity hockey team on securing their first sectional title since 2014. The team has had a wonderful season and we could not be more proud of the effort they have put forth. Next, congratulations to the girls indoor track and field team as they won their second consecutive Class A1 championship. Senior Cameron C. earned a state championship title in the high jump and junior Corintia G. won the state championship in the triple jump. This past weekend, the girls basketball team traveled to Buffalo State University to challenge a tough Lancaster team in regionals. After recovering from a deficit in the first half, the Warriors were able to come back and secure a win. We wish the girls best of luck as they will play the state final four in Troy, New York this coming Friday. Finally, congratulations to Kaylee M. and Stephanie G. as they competed in the state championship for gymnastics this past week. Both did very well and we could not be more proud. That is all for our March report. Have a great St. Patrick's Day and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. After a well-needed and restful break, we're glad to be back. Many events have been going on at Thomas that I'm so excited to share with you. Titan Service Scholars started off Valentine's Day great by selling carnations to be delivered. Each flower came with a kind note left from the person who sent it. These were a great hit as we sold over 500 of them. Not only did they send people kindness, but they also help us fundraise for our international service project to the Dominican Republic in July. We also attended Night to Shine to assist individuals in their own prong. This night was made special for people with individual needs and to have their own Night to Shine and enjoy themselves. It was hosted all around the world on the same night. We participated by doing in hair, nails, makeup, and did karaoke, dance, and paparazzi for them. We are so glad to be able to attend this meaningful event to make each guest feel so special and loved. Tomorrow, we look forward to attending the Global Citizenship Conference at Nazareth High School to learn more about cultures and backgrounds. I'm beyond excited to present this year with my co-founder of Titan Service Scholars about teen activism through service. We attended this event last year and it means a lot to us because it inspired the start to Titan Service Scholars back at Thomas. It is crazy to see how much we've grown and accomplished in a year. Titans ended the winter sports season strong as Connor G. and Jake M. qualified for the state tournament for wrestling. Thomas basketball made it to semifinals where the T-Birds came and we are so excited to cheer on our team. Our cheerleading team won sectionals and qualified for states where they traveled to Binghamton and placed second in the state. Connor T., Evan L., Jerry L., and Natalia S. all competed in states for indoor track. Congratulations to our winter sport athletes. We are excited for all of our spring sports to start this week, especially our brand-new sport, flag football, with a lot of girls signing up for the team. We know how excited everyone is to have us at Thomas. Last week, the Dream Club along with BBSU hosted an evening of poetry and spoken word. This event was to celebrate Black History Month and representation of all. The Philharmonic and concert orchestras for Thomas and Schrader took a trip to Nazareth College. They performed their March Concert Collaboration in the Glazer Performing Arts Center. Thomas students participated in the WICC programing contest at Cornell University last week. There were 47 teams of groups of two to three. Ella E. and Jenna D. represented Thomas. Way to go, girls. Last week, Thomas hosted a lively and electric basketball game between the staff members of Thomas and Schrader. It was a bond-one Webster event where we all came together to support a foundation called Dreams for Drake. We raised over $1,000 in support for this amazing cause. With Thomas staff lagging behind after the first half, the Thomas students were excited to gain more points for our teachers. Halftime games were held where students from Thomas and Schrader participated. Thomas won almost all the games and won our basketball team a much-needed advantage. Although the lead was not great enough, we ended up losing by three, but our Titans are so proud of how our teacher played despite the loss. We'll be sure to get you next year, Schrader. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thanks, Shannon. Thanks, Audrey.
Hannah had the perfect ending, although the game score was not the perfect ending. Good evening, everybody. And as you heard, that's where I'm going to start with that charity event. It was the Crosstown Charity Basketball, Schrader Goal, Thomas Owl. It was pretty amazing. We had people from all over playing, from all different roles in the buildings playing. We had the kids doing stacking games at halftime, stacking cups, shooting hoops, popping balloons, riding tricycles. Usually, the kids who were riding tricycles were the tallest boys in the building. It was pretty funny. They had a great time and there was a great deal of money earned for our charity called Dream for Drake, which is really cool. Agency where local children and teens receive the help when unfortunately they have a loss in their life of a sibling or parent and they can come together and know they are not alone. We will always be with them and help to do the things. So reach out to them if you need. They are an amazing agency and they were there, which was really cool. It's also a trickle-down effect. Basketball seems to like cover across Webster, whether it's fifth go sixth and then sixth go back to their elementary schools to play, or Schrader, Thomas, Owl, Goal, or when you're having middle schools going up to high school, there's that competition as well. Those are pretty cool things to be able to see and how it just continues to rotate. Then it ends up going full circle because our WTA members also organize with our PTSA and our Weller members ways for our seniors walk with their caps and gowns through their elementary buildings on that last week's school. And that's a pretty cool parade, really is, especially for kids who haven't gotten on the bus since they were in elementary school. It's a little different. Our electives, they're their own version of March Madness. There is something called March Mammal Madness and it is pretty cool. Jennifer, you've seen some of it? It's pretty wild. The kids are doing some phenomenal research. It's all simulated, brackets are made, you have your reasonings and your evidence, and WTA members have really organized a great field. The bracket is on the Owl wall, actually, and they're all filled out by our students. The presentations are there. During community circles, there's also WTA members giving students the chance to say why they think their mammal is going to end up winning or losing. At our middle schools, they have some of the juiciest facts. I received this from Candace. They're having some wild research going on in that inquiry act. Some of the things finding out, the social media, where social media becomes a problem instead of pleasure, where sweatshop owners, these are really heavy-duty topics for anyone and at the middle school, the kids are looking into that. Children in India carrying harvested crops, political cartoons and greedy people, how we can change these things, many people who argue about cloning and life, will they be able to be exposed to diseases or immune to diseases? So it's pretty wild what the middle schools are doing in the libraries and finding out where are they going with all this research and voting on that as well. The middle school, they have theirs. The elementary buildings do too. We understand they are doing a book-to-book bracket. Teacher picks eight books and they're dwindling them down to just one to be the book of the school. And the kids are really arguing with that sense of passion and respect for something they believe in and having that voice from picture books right through research in middle school, right to stacking cups to earn us points. Another piece that seems really cool that is coming back full circle, student teachers not just being able to be in the rooms that they're assigned to and working with the teachers that is their mentor teacher or their partner teacher for that length of time, but also being able to go into other classrooms in the building. And within, one of the teachers, one of our members reached out, she said, "I sent an email and it was less than a day. I had seven to nine teachers welcoming this person from RTI services in math to fifth grade enrichment to fourth grade math and English wanted in there." It was really cool to be able to have our teachers coming out of college have the exposure they should to be ready for those things. We all know our retirement numbers are a little bit different than the number of students coming out of college wanting to be there and we need to be welcoming and we are welcoming and people are opening their doors. They've always had their doors open, but we all know the reality of it. We've had to shut them a little bit. So that is a very cool piece. Another observation that WTA is reaching out to WTA members, Earth Day. Detergent bottles are needed, but just there was a shortage not of detergent bottles, of just having the collection. They're doing a big Earth Day project at the high schools and the kids coming around and saying, you know, "Just throw them into the cardboard box outside Mrs. Drury's window" or door. It's neat, reaching out again, not being open to sending out when you need help. New clubs with spring. You heard about the football. I can't wait to see what's coming in. And I cannot wait to see and to have those guys here. Maybe we'll have some people come with me next time that are doing the flag football. Sparks. Sparks has a great opportunity. They are going to, our WTA members are being able to, they made it eligible to not only RITs, but they are going to, I want to make sure I get this right, overnight in Cleveland where they will compete on the global level as well as the national level, to a three-day piece. So wow, for our members, bringing kids to a completely different level, just being high school. Our WTA continues to share our resources, whether it's our Google classrooms with each other, our emails, you guys, basketball games. We continue to share. Our months we celebrate, we honor lives of others and make sure things are all on those classrooms. We celebrate each other. Most importantly, we celebrate our students. Wish you all peace, happiness, and a safe ride home.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
Next up is Superintendent's Report.
All right, gentlemen, I think if you want to bring a fifth one up, the five of you guys can come on up here and we'll take turns. Come on up here and I'm going to start reading if you guys are coming up and I'll introduce you all in just a second. Maybe Mr. Schifte, if you want to sit right there, there are four of you, there's four seats, there we go. If you want to sit right there and run that clicker, that'd be perfect. All right, I want to begin my report with two opportunities for our community members. First, you're invited to attend our Family Engagement Conversation tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, right here in the second floor Professional Development Center at Spry Middle School. The district is offering an opportunity to chat with Executive Director of Family and Student Engagement and Inclusivity, Dr. Robert Chawwell, right over there to our left, would be stage right, I guess, or screen right. If you can't attend in person, you're always welcome to watch via the live stream on the district website at webstorschools.org/familyengagement. We will also use this conversation event as an opportunity to prepare for another community event, the inaugural convening on Equity and Education coming up on Saturday, March 25th, from 8:30 till 11:00 AM, and again, right here at Spry. This convening is a collaborative effort of the district and the Webster's Families Igniting Racial Equity are our fire group, and it will feature presenters and student leaders involved in diversity and equity efforts in the Webster community, and you can find out more on our website. All right, now, it's my honor to introduce to the audience, we have four bright young men out there today that are going to be talking to us. Mark Schifte, our principal, at DeWitt will start, and then Chris Callahan, our administrator, our middle school owl, Ben Whipple, and Brian Wilcox are two directors of our Aquatics Center, are also going to be sharing a little bit about what's going on around campus. So, Mark, take it over.
Thank you. Just click them. Ah, there you go. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be in front of you and be with you in this audience. It is an honor and representing the seven elementary schools in the presentation we do. Our presentation really kind of focuses on the highlights of the ways we try to create a sense of belonging through our schools. We focus in on hoping, we want to develop our students to feel cared, accepted, respected, and valued in our schools. Throughout this presentation, you're going to see different ways that we try to help our students feel socially supported and connected to one another. This first slide talks a little bit about increasing diversity, equity, inclusion efforts to ensure a welcoming, affirming environment. That is a board objective there. We talk about that in our school. We brought together a presentation about More Than Peach. I don't know if you know anything about this, but this is a book written by Bellan Woodward. And on your desk, you'll actually see some crayons. I brought along some crayons for you. There's two different boxes of crayons. Our students are reading the book. One of the focuses in our school is really increasing the diversity within not only the materials we use, but also the books we use, and this book really represents more of a mirror for some of our students to see themselves. And in this activity, they actually talk about Bellan Woodward, who was a crayon activist, if you didn't know. She was disappointed when students would talk about crayons as skin color crayons and they didn't represent her skin color. So she created her own set of crayons. So the crayons you have in front of you, you have two sets of crayons, and I brought both. One is a typical set of crayons. You'll see regular colors there. And then the second set of crayons, they might be in a white box, has a diversity of colors that represent more than just one skin color. What we do with our students is give them opportunity to read the book and listen and talk about the student activist that Bellan was, and then they cut out their arm, they draw their arm and cut it out, they color it, and they find a color that matches their skin color. I encourage you to take a look at those colors and find and match your skin color. There should be one that represents you, and if not, it is the shading of more than one. We want to make sure that our students feel included within our classrooms and within our school. We think about that within the resources that we provide. We want to make sure that the resources we're putting in our classrooms are a mirror or an image of themselves, and they see themselves, whether it be a basketball player, a artist, a flute player, any of those different things that they could be seeing themselves as, we want to see them in the mirrors of themselves within that. And this is one of those examples of something we do to try to represent that. Bellan was an activist, we encourage our students to do the same. What are those things that they can do to grow and develop others in their community based on their interests and their needs? So you can see here in this picture here, we have the students who are reading and they're drawing out their hands, and then here's a collection. This was at the beginning, I didn't get to see the end, but that whole wall was filled with their hands and the colors that they created, and within that they decorated their different decorations to represent themselves. Every day, our children are walking into our building, seeing themselves on the wall and seeing how they fit in with their community, the widespread community, and it's all diverse. So it's a great opportunity for our students to really see themselves and connect with the community in their classroom.
I love that part.
Reading buddies. Reading buddies is an amazing thing. You're going to see this throughout every school within our district. Reading buddies, this is a UPK classroom, look at those smiles, the happiness. Some of the best moments I ever had was walking down the hallway and seeing my fifth graders with my first graders and my third graders. They just, they're overjoyed. We just heard about the need for good teaching and good teachers. Here's an opportunity for children to really get to know each other, to learn whether they like this occupation and get moments in their life where they feel like they're expressing and developing other people. But this is that intergenerational fun, that opportunity to really learn from each other and develop our own interests and develop our own teachers within our district, hoping that those brought forth and then that. It was 100th Day. I know we talked about that in our last presentation last month. Well, here's more pictures from that because it just keeps going. It's an exciting moment for our students. You can see they put some great decorations. Again, we talked about academics. Here it is, here they are reading to each other, they're actually getting that opportunity to engage with each other. Play is so critical within our younger grades, and within play, it allows students to really understand each other. It gives them a chance to really express themselves in different ways. You see them building those train sets. They're developing and understanding that communication skill. How much do our students really need the opportunity to communicate with each other, not only at their age level, but beyond? So our students are getting the opportunity to be role models within their classrooms. They're getting to enjoy and have fun with each other and smile. Those opportunities will last a lifetime. In the center there, that center picture, they're actually doing a 3D sculpture. Together, they're greeting this. This slide shows the expression of art and excitement within the classrooms. Up in the top left is the recorder. We have a student playing a recorder for other students. So we're turning the page here, where they learn a skill and then they get the opportunity to represent that skill to others and express that. So the opportunities that we see really encourage engaged students to want to grow within their skill level. Again, more of that reading, more of those reading buddies, opportunities to really interact with each other. The smiles you see are contagious, for sure. This picture is actually the same picture that we just showed you at the beginning done at Plank South. A different representation, same project, being able to represent each other and their differences and the unique qualities. I love the slogan in here, individually unique, together complete. Same type of a project they did at Plank South. And here we have Plank South buddies. They were actually able to read to each other and actually wrote to each other. Again, that figurative play, that opportunity to grow with each other, the encouragement and learning the rules and the communication skills that they express with each other. And finally, random acts of kindness. We talked about this in past years. We did that again this year. What we have here is in the middle is that confetti that they developed. Each classroom developed a piece of confetti where they talked about something they were going to do as a random act of kindness within their classroom or beyond. And you read there, and I got a few of them that were cute. Be a rainbow in somebody else's cloud. Everyone belongs here. No act of kindness, no matter how small, is ever wasted. Those are developed by our students, for our students, and they read those each and every day when they're walking through our hallways. It builds that culture and climate, so critical and important for them. They see themselves and they see them as a part of a stakeholder, as part of their district. And here's some more random acts of kindness coming from Plank South. You can see them, Mrs. Doyle, two Mrs. Doyle from Lily and kindergarten kindness grants. So kindness grants were expressed and shared with each other. And then the hearts cover the classroom doors with compliments. Those compliments, those simple compliments could make such a difference in somebody's Students here, we have a couple different students. We have intergenerational students. We also have classroom students who are buddies and buddy systems, playing on the playground, working with each other, learning from each other and growing. And finally, the Plank North Pride. This was actually kind of a fun activity they did at Plank North where they switched. So classroom teachers would switch for a day, imagine a literacy teacher in a third-grade classroom, a PE teacher in a fifth-grade classroom, getting a day where they have the opportunity to learn from each other and actually get to see and interact in other people's lives and other people's days. Really good opportunity for our students to learn from each other, our teachers to learn from each other, and to express themselves in a different way. That's all for the elementary report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Works perfectly. Good evening to the board, senior leadership, and everyone tuning in from home. My name is Chris Callahan. My day job is supporting the Owl Middle Program, and tonight I have the privilege of sharing with you the campus update for the secondary buildings and the Owl and Goal Program. Spry Middle School celebrated their Spirit Week, which included a charity basketball game. This past weekend, a very talented drama club did a presentation of Footloose, and those showings were open to the community all weekend. Mess this up here. Willink Middle School made strides towards the Culture and Climate Goal by hosting an annual, second annual chili cook-off. I'm here to report that the voting system was rigged. Mr. Powers won. And I'm not bitter at all because my pumpkin chili was high-quality, even though it didn't place in the top three.
Which one was his? Like, what was it labeled as?
I believe it was called the Three Meat Treat.
Yeah, it was the Three Meat Treat.
That was the spicy one, right?
Victory Chili.
Wasn't that spicy?
Did you bring some?
What's that?
Did you bring some?
I did not bring some. Yeah.
We were all there. We all got to sample.
Yeah, we did. We sampled it. I'm not bitter about my defeat. The other thing that we really want to highlight is Connor G. in his second year of wrestling, qualified for the state tournament, representing Willink and Thomas Athletic, so we're proud of that accomplishment. At the high school Owl Program, they were working towards our K-12 Owl Inclusion Goal to reduce disproportionality. A couple of highlights, in the top right corner, you will see the Owl Program celebrating their victory in the PTSA flapjacks and lumberjacks flannel shirt competition. So they won the prize. We also have a representation of a student doing a reading of To Kill a Mockingbird, dressed up as Atticus Finch to a page-to-screen classroom. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, we have some students infusing in a dance class and phys ed. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, as mentioned earlier, the building-wide Mammal March Madness. Owl Middle, again, also working towards reducing our disproportionality by inclusion. We want to highlight some of the data to support our work this school year. To date, we've had 63% of our students participate in one or more extracurricular activity. 53% of our students are actively participating, and we want to shout out our partners at Willink and this work. I do not want to forget Ms. Hurley, Ms. Kingmons, Mr. Odell, Mr. Cook, Ms. Scatella, Ms. Concordia, Ms. Wojcisz, Mr. Sozio, Ms. Brain, and Ms. Kiesel for their partnership. In the top-left corner, I want to highlight our tour guide for the Board Learning Walk. I'm Aliyah. Amalia A., and she earned a very significant reward for her time, and she is an All-Star. And then on the screen, we also have some pictures from one of the clubs that our students really enjoy, which is Pokemon Club. In the Gold program, they wrote and delivered Valentine's to St. Anne's Community Center. They are really looking forward to their parent-teacher conferences, which are coming this Friday and next Friday. The collaboration between the school teams and the families is really evident, and they're excited in that work. And they're also in the planning stages of the Gold Family Week, which runs concurrent with Trader One Warrior Week, which is the week of March 27. Thomas High School wants to highlight the charity game that they did not win, but they are very happy to report that there were no injuries. There was a lot of money raised for a really good cause. Also to highlight is the Music in Our Schools Month and all the great displays of music that are happening at Thomas High School. And then the bottom right-hand corner is actually a district-wide group that had the opportunity to go to Cornell to compete in a programming competition, which is really cool. Lots happening at Trader. They hosted their annual Winter Olympics event for students, also participated in the charity basketball game. Lots going on with Music in Our Schools Month. You can see a really cool picture of a mega band, so all the bands performing one piece together. So a lot of collaboration going into that. Athletics, lots to celebrate for athletics. We have state champion winners in track and field, and in gymnastics, and alpine ski, and we have sectional championship winners in hockey and girls' basketball. And then last, Trader wanted to highlight some work that they did over February break. They held a Learning Recovery Institute that successfully helped 25 ninth-graded students remediate courses and get back on track. This effort included National Honor Society students, teachers, buses, and a whole lot of chips. Lots going on in the secondary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting Brian and myself, Ben, come out to explain some of the programs and opportunities that we have at the Aquatic Center. Looking at our staff that we have there, we have two directors, there's tons of programs that we have going on weekends, stuff like that. So Brian and I kind of divide and conquer between the two pools, whether it's at Thomas or the Aquatic Center. So Brian and I are the directors there. We have three administrative assistants. Having long hours and having weekends, there's just too many hours in the day that one, it's overload for one person. We actually have four full-time lifeguards that do a majority of our daytime shifts. It's hard, we have a lot of high school and college guards that, depending on the season, it fluctuates between whether they're home or not. So we have four full-time lifeguards. We have 67 right now on our staff. Four part-time lifeguards, that's high school and college guards that we have throughout the year, and then we have two full-time custodians that helps out throughout the hours that we're open.
We actually have two facilities, two facilities with the Webster Aquatic Center, which is the 50-meter pool that we host a lot of our big meets at. With the college meet, we have the diving boards for them, the two one-meter boards and the two three-meter boards. We can fit up to 876 people spectating in the bleachers and then another 500 or so on deck. And after the meet, that place gets pretty messed up, but our custodians do a great job, and it looks like Rome was there about two hours later. The Thomas Pool is where we do a lot of our PE classes, and especially our swim lessons are over there. It's a little bit warmer over there for the little kids, and most of our PE classes, our elementaries are starting up next week. They're coming in next week. Willink just finished, they're finishing up this week. So most of the PE classes, other than Trader, and sometimes State Row comes to the Aquatic Center depending on the timing of the year. As you can see, we are open bright and early at 5:30 in the morning, and there are people waiting in their cars at 5:15, even though we never open the doors till 5:30. So we are open quite early in the morning, open to the community most of the day from 5:30 until, you know, usually most of the year, it's till about 3:30, 4 o'clock when the high school swim teams take over, and then blue fins after that. And then we're open on Saturdays from 8 to 12 on the weekends.
So some of the improvements that the Aquatic Center has received in the past few years, right at the beginning of COVID, they came in and they replaced our lights. So we have LED lights that it reflects off the ceiling, and it's cut down our cost for electricity to, like, the facility and the temperature of the old bulbs that they have quite a bit. We had the acid wash come in, they came in and drained the pool and acid washed. So if you look at the top right, my top right, you can see where the line was, where they were two so far, you can see where it was cleaned and not. It had been about seven years, and it should be done about every five, so it held up well, but now our pool looks a lot better. They just redid our sound system, we had some faulty speakers and stuff, so they went through, redid the whole sound system. And that was always one of the big complaints of spectators in meets and coaches on deck, it was just too hard to hear. You have 500 kids, 800 people in the stands, and you can't hear what's going on. So that was a huge improvement. We have a new scoreboard that's a video board that's going up, and it's these improvements that need to be made to keep our facility one of the top in the state. And after we have these improvements are completed, which our scoreboard, I think, installed is going to be starting next Monday, it'll probably be one of the best in the state. There's video cameras that are being installed, so you can watch the swimmers and divers as they compete. We've got new handicap lifts at our facility in the Aquatic Center, and we've got new timing tables. So the actual visual of our facility is fantastic. A lot of people come in looking at our pool and asking when it opened, and we say 2001, and they're like, it's over 20 years, and it is pretty impressive how, up to date it is.
And Thomas Pool, in the last like two or three years, has really transformed. It was open in the 1960s, Ben and I both grew up swimming in the old pool. You wouldn't even recognize it from when we swam back in the 80s and 90s. But they put in a whole new filter system, the gutter system, and brought all the guts of the pool up to the upper level, so that way it's a little bit easier to work with in the air handling system, which was in the basement for some reason, is now upstairs as well. So it looks way better. They went over and then epoxy over the existing tile on the deck, and I thought that came out really good. And again, the new lighting system, the LED, again, cutting down on costs.
So in our facility, we offer a ton of Webster district programs that are just specifically for our Webster kids. We have a physical, like we were talking before, the PE classes come in right now, we're at third through 12th, that kind of when, the past couple of years when COVID came in, we were going to go down to second, and eventually our goal is trying to get down to kindergarten, even if the kids touch the water one time or a couple times just to get used to it. So we have the PE classes coming in second through 12th grade. We have our varsity girls and boys, JV girls and boys, and our modified. We have a co-ed team right now for our students to swim. We run all of our coaching and supervisors CPR and first aid certifications through our facility, so all the coaches, every, all the three seasons come through our building, any supervisors for events, they come through our pool, our conference room. We have a PE teacher that teaches, from Trader, that teaches lifeguarding class every other year, so it gives the kids an opportunity to get their lifeguarding certification throughout the PE school year, which is great. We have other teams that come in, soccer, basketball, wrestling, football, they all come in, cross-strein, and just change up the pace of what their sport is. And at the end of the year, a lot of times we have a fifth-grade dare party, or the end-of-the-year parties, they come in. We have, you'll see a picture of the Jungle Joe that we have, and it's just a great time for the kids, and they enjoy it.
So some of the community programs that we have, we do a lot of the Red Cross stuff, the Learn to Swim program, the Water Safety Instructor class, which teaches kids how to become swim lesson instructors. And so between all these programs, kids from six months all the way up to one of our water size ladies, Audrey Johnville, who's 91 years old, she comes every Tuesday, Thursday, the 10 o'clock class, and she absolutely loves it. So we offer water size classes to the community throughout the day, Monday through, usually right now it's Thursday, two or three classes each day, and they absolutely love it. And like I said, the lap swimmers, the people come water walking in the morning, they're there religiously at 5:30, and they come through our facility all day long. The Jungle Joe, we do a lot of birthday parties at our facility with the Jungle Joe, it's an inflatable, you can see it in the top middle picture right there. It's a great thing for little kids, everyone's in life jackets, so it's super safe, they can climb all the way around it, in it, and then go down the big slide at the end. On the top right, you can see one of our instructors, Cindy, teaching swim lessons to a couple tadpole little kids. And then the bottom is one of our water babies classes, and then at the top left is our lifeguard class that we just ran over winter break, where during COVID, we really struggled with staffing and stuff like that because we couldn't host classes in person, and that thing you have to be in person, there's really no way to do it virtually, unfortunately. So now that we're having more of those, our staffing is getting a little bit better. You can see here with the, our percent increase from 2021, 22 to 22, 23. The swim lesson one, really doing all those numbers is actually a great exercise for us to go through this and do these, go through these numbers. One of the reasons it jumped so much was because of COVID. We were forced to do really just private lessons, and again, not being able to do a WSI class, our instructor numbers weren't what they would like to be. So, but this past year, we ran a couple more classes, got a couple more instructors, and we went back to doing group lessons, which was wonderful, because the kids just learned better in a group lesson, as far as I can tell. Monkey see, monkey do, little kid won't be scared to go underwater if he sees Joey do it. So water size classes, that's increased. We were able to find another instructor, and that went up from the previous year. The drop-ins, I'm actually, was, I was actually a little bit surprised that it even went up, because during COVID, a lot of the other facilities weren't open. So we had people driving from as far as an hour away to use our facility, and I thought that number, those numbers would actually go down, because people are getting back to using their own facilities in their towns, but we actually retained a lot of those people. They'd rather drive 35 minutes to our facility than go to the one that's near closer to their house.
Some of the area programs we have, we have some high school teams that rent our facility throughout the school year. Our Lady of Mercy and McQuade, they don't have facilities, so we open our doors, and whether it's Thomas, we let them use that pool, or we share the pool with, you know, depending if the boys, seems a little bit smaller, we'll have McQuade in swimming at the same time, just giving other athletes the ability to swim. We also have summer camps that come through, at the top corner, we have the Special Olympics Swim Meet every single year, and it's a great event to have, having a facility large enough that can host an event like that, it's really a great time. Monroe County Sheriff's Department comes in, they do scuba diving, we have Wonder Care come in, they use the Jungle Joe, and they're always in the water swimming. One of our biggest ones is having the Webster Blue Fins, there are about 200 participants on that team, and that's Monday through Saturday, actually, pretty much every single day, and it's, having a facility like that and using it for what it's meant to be is great.
A couple other things that we have going on this year, which is really cool, two Olympians came in, Ryan Murphy and Colin Jones, into the clinic with a lot of the kids from around the area, but one thing they wanted to do is warm up and do a practice in the morning. Our girls happened to be swimming that morning, and they swam with them, and our girls had a great time doing that, it was really cool for them. So that's a picture on the top left over there. And then one thing that we do every year is the youth triathlon. It's a fundraiser for our boys and girls swim teams, and it's all the boys and girls, you know, help out and help run it, and the little kids, I know both my kids did it when they were little, his daughter is on the top right there, and the far right, Lily, she just loved doing it, she was so excited to do it for the first time. A couple other things we host, we're actually doing another blood drive on Tuesday, and then the ESY Summer Camp comes in every summer, over the Thomas Pool on Fridays, and we even do Camp Smile once a year, they come in for a week.
Some of the high school weeks that we host, this year we were lucky to, we'd get the bid for the girls' state meet, so we had actually girls' swimming states in our facility. There's about four pools in New York that put in bids and stuff, so we were lucky to get that. Every year we have sectionals, we have our MCCIs, we have hosted meets throughout the year for the Blue Fins. That is, now our Golds, we have Silvers, and then the Eastern Zones is a meet from Maine to like Chicago down to Virginia. So it covers a big northeast section of the United States, so we draw a lot, and it's just not, it's wonderful for our district, but also the community, between hotels, restaurants, and everything, there's a huge ripple effect that comes from that facility. And another great event that we host every single year is the College Championship with Allegheny Mountain and Empire Eight College Championship, and that draws from 10, depending on the year, 10 to 12 colleges come and use the facility and fill up the hotels. So it's great.
Here you can see, this is a picture taken from states, that's our John Dorner there in the bottom left, he's been coaching at Webster, he coached Ben and I a long time ago, he's still coaching, and you can see the bleachers up there, it's about 787 spectators, another 514 athletes on deck, and there's four of our girls that were at the state meet, there's another two that aren't pictured, but they had a wonderful time, not being able to sleep in their own bed, and not having to go to a hotel room and eat hotel food and all that kind of stuff. And we were lucky to award the bidding with that crazy guy in the far left. So we're hosting the girls' state meets the next two years, actually.
And that's what's going on in the apartment.
Impressive, incredibly impressive, every time I hear it, and it's all four of you, thank you very much, you guys did a wonderful job. I'm just going to wrap things up here. The last thing I want to mention is that our elementary school, for our elementary school families, please remember that parent-teacher conferences are coming up this week on Thursday, March 16th, and Friday, March 17th, and also next week, Thursday and Friday, the 23rd and 24th. Remember, those will be half-days for our elementary students. Be sure to watch for communication from your child's school with more details. And with that, that ends my report for campus news. Thank you very, very much.
Can I, I do have one quick question. I do. Hey, Brian, Ben, who handles all that scheduling for the, you guys host a lot? Who does, is it one per, both of you? It's got to be a full-time job just doing the scheduling.
And then when you double book, and then you try to figure, you try to make everybody know.
Thank you so much, because that was definitely comprehensive. I didn't know how much with the breadth that we have in the offerings to the community. It's fantastic.
We looked at our calendar, I think it was 32 weekends out of the year we have stuff going on.
Yeah, that's a lot, and different time slots, I was like, you guys need some like software or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget workshop number one.
I'm ready.
Brian, do you want questions as you go along, or save them to the end?
Oh, as we go along, yeah.
Sure. Just in case.
With budget, I figure it's best in the moment, right? Because if I wait too long, I'm already lost. No, absolutely.
All right. Well, that's going to be a tough one to follow with all those good things happening at the Aquatic Center. So, welcome, First Budget Workshop, March 14th here tonight. Couple things, I wanted to do a little deeper dive on state aid after some of the questions last time, I thought it'd be a great opportunity for a little learning, and I love teaching it, so, and since I do it in another life for SUNY Brockport, I thought I'd bring a little of that over here. Kind of do, go for maybe 50,000 feet, we'll drop the plane to about 30,000 feet for this one, and then just go over all the operational areas, and then, you know, please jump in and ask questions as we go. So, as we go to state aid 101, we're going to focus on foundation aid, and then look at BOSI's transportation, and then our building and excess cost aids as well. Just try to unpack those a little bit, give you a little bit more background on how we do that, and why at the last meeting I highlighted certain revenue streams coming from the state, and where we get those differences. So, this is my best attempt at simplifying foundation aid. I'm going to hold up this artifact for you right here. This is the actual formula, and how many pages it is, it's about, right now, 22 different pages of the foundation aid formula. We'll try to simplify that into one slide for us this evening. So, here it is. In short, this is very, very simplified. It is aidable students times what the state says is the cost of educating a successful kid minus what they think that school district can afford. So that is, in a nutshell, what equals foundation aid. Now those two little... Now those two little parts that what the state says is what you should spend has these kind of three things that go with it. And I'm summarizing, making it very simplified. What they consider the average cost of a successful school times New York State, it's really like 12 different regions, so there's different regional cost indexes, times what they view as your pupil need indexes. So all those feed into that part of the formula. Now, the minimum local contribution is pretty much the state's way of saying, this is how much we think you can afford based on your state income tax returns in the district and your property values. And so those data points contribute to your minimal local contribution. All that together multiplied by your aidable students is really what foundation aid is. So it's state benchmarks for what's a successful school, given a monetary number, minus for how wealthy or not wealthy your district is, times kids. That's foundation aid is simplified from this to one slide.
So Brian, I know that foundation aid has gone up. There was a three-year program. So is there one of these in particular that they adjusted to increase the foundation aid or is it a combination of them?
So they just let the formula go. So every year, it would spit out the amount the formula should give us. But then the state would say, well, we're not going to give you that. Here's your number. And it was arbitrary. It was, you know, there's six different versions of it. And this is what schools A through Z got and, you know, this is what it would be. So now, this is the very first year. So for this budget cycle for '23, '24 will be the first actual year where, you know, you hit the button to run the formula and it's actually spitting out what you should get. No, no other manipulations to it.
But Brian, this, the formula that's in here, this is actually based on really old data, right?
Yeah, some of the data points are lagging from census data. Some of the enrollment data is on a lag based on when we report. And, you know, some of the income wealth factors are on about a two to three-year lag too, based on, you know, the property, you know, because they're drawing, they're drawing information from the Department of Taxation and Finance, the Comptroller for some of that stuff. So it comes from a number of different areas. So inherently, it would always be behind. It's never going to be like, okay, this is what it was last year and it's automatically into a formula. There's, there's a lag on data points. But some of those are significantly behind because they're using 2000 census data. All right. So next up is this instructional materials aid. These are flat aid categories. So this is what we talked about when we, we could lump these all together. And it's all based on enrollment and we must spend to these minimum thresholds. So for instance, every kid in New York State for software, we get $14.98 per student. Take that amount, multiply it by our enrollments for all resident pupils attending inside the district. So there's a little caveat. So it's everybody in our buildings, everybody in the private parochials inside the district.
Is that pre-K too?
No. It is not pre-K. That's a whole separate grant. Hardware, so we get hardware, like technology hardware. We get 2420 per student, but it gets reversed by our, our WADA, which is in essence our BOSI's aid ratio. So using our BOSI's aid ratio, we really get $16 per kid. This is based on enrollment for all resident pupils. So it doesn't have to be within the boundaries. It can be resident pupils that attend outside the boundaries. Library, every student, times 625, that's also on enrollment for all resident pupils. And then textbooks, it's 5825 per student, based on enrollment for all resident pupils. So these are flat amounts. This is what we get. These haven't changed in, well, as long as I've been doing this. So they're flat. It doesn't matter about anything else. It's just pupils times these amounts. Any questions on those instructional material aids? The next one's this group expense-based aid category. These are expense-driven. They are, you know, spend it to get the aid. So final '22, '23 expenses this year, so June 23. We report to SED in fall of '23. That creates our '23, '24 state aid for these categories. These formulas are all based on wealth and income property values. They're, and some enrollment. These aren't flat. These fluctuate because they do take into account a lot, the formulas on income and property. So those projections we make in the fall, we report actual. But we also make projections for what we think we're going to do in that fiscal year, determine what the governor's and legislative budget is. So I'll, I'll show you an example of what that looks like. So transportation is just our state-approved expenses because some things get denied that, for transportation. Minus deductions, they take certain things away from us, multiplied by our aid ratio, that's our final aid. Building aid, it's project-approved expenditures multiplied by our aid ratio. The excess cost aids, those are our additional aids for students with disabilities that are in public and private settings. So a student that's attending a BOSI's placement or student that's at a Hillside placement, those are, those students generate some extra state aid. So those are based on final enrollment numbers on June 30th, multiplied by the cost per placement, minus there is a deduction because the state similar says the first X amount of dollars you guys have to pay for. Then we'll give you a percentage for every dollar over that amount, times your aid ratio. That's your final aid there. And then on the BOSI side too, final approved expenditures minus deductions. There are certain things we buy from BOSI's that are almost 100% aidable, but the state says, no, we won't give you BOSI's aid on that part of it. Multiplied by our aid ratio gives us our final aid. So what does that look like when we're talking budget and projecting on the expense-based sides? And I'm going to just take you through transportation as an example. So bus fuel. So in August, September, we report that we think for this year, we're going to spend a million dollars on fuel. Our aid ratio is a little over 70%. So when the governor does the budget, they're going to project that we're going to get $707,000 worth of aid based on what we think we're going to spend this year on bus fuel. Okay? This always, this happens end of August, beginning of September. Everybody with me? All right. But now we're going through the fiscal year, all right? And now we're through the budget process and we're really trying to see, okay, at June 30th, I don't think we're going to spend a million dollars on bus fuel. I think it's going to be $900,000 when we go and close the books and report it to the state. Aid ratio hasn't changed, but now we're actually going to probably get $636,300. So if we went with blind faith on what the governor told us on that report, we would be short $70,700. That's why we have to look at what we think we're going to actually end the year at. That's what we have to do with all the expense-based aids. These four that I just covered is the same thing. I just used the transportation expenditure as an example. That's how expense-based aids work. That's why when the governor's number comes out, it's all based on projections. And, you know, we're two months into the fiscal year. We don't know what's going to happen in all those months. So we need some more time to take a look at those and really focus on what do we think we're going to have.
So what happens if you underspend? I'm assuming you can't move it into reserves? You, you just don't get reimbursed for the, what you underspent?
So this is why, like, we, when we go to finalize the budget, we'll say, all right, if the state was going to, the governor said we're going to have $707,000. When we finalize and adopt a budget, I'm going to say, nope, it's $636,300. Because this is, this is what is really going to come to fruition next year for our, our aid. It's not going to be what the governor said on the projection. It's going to be the number because I've adjusted the numbers. So that's why it doesn't match up. When we see the printout and the reports that get released, those numbers are usually never accurate because they're all projections, a snapshot in time from really the beginning of the fiscal year that quite often aren't very accurate. Questions on that? Does that clear up some of the state aid kind of cycle confusions and why certain things are the way they are? All right, perfect. All righty, on to budget. So first up on our operational budgets is our buildings and grounds this evening. So these are our preliminary numbers and what we're looking at. Couple of, couple of updates of what's going on. Equipment, really, you're going to see a larger number there. We're trying to clean up our ordering on that aspect and come out with a a really comprehensive vehicle replacement plan. I think the last couple of years, we've really, we always took it for granted, I think, that we could go and buy a truck at any time we wanted at one of our local dealerships. That was, you know, Chevy's on state contract. We're going to just run over to the Chevy dealership and get, you know, a new truck or a new Ford that's on a state contract for plow. We learned that in the last two years, that's not possible. We were, we were backlogged. And so some of our plow trucks and other support vehicles, you know, extended beyond what we would normally like to see. So we're going to make a commitment as part of this budget to having a firm, solid plan, a replacement cycle for our vehicles moving forward. So you'll see that is kind of in response to what we've been seeing on, on the vehicle side. On the energy side, we're able to keep our budget flat in spite of higher energy cost spikes. A lot of that has to do with our energy maintenance plan and a lot of the energy things we have done in our past capital projects. 2016, we replaced all the boilers in all of our buildings and hooked them onto the network. They are now controllable and we have much better control over that. So turn them on and off when there's nobody there. They're much more accurate and it's saving us money, so we're able to keep those flat. BOSI's increase, you'll see on the line item, some new software for work orders. We've made a conversion there and we're purchasing that software through BOSI's. So that, you'll see that increase there. And then some cost increases, you know, minimum wage is really, you know, pressing the labor market when it comes to our facility staff. And then right now, we have a placeholder for a capital outlay project, which you'll see a little bit. We're looking, if it stays at $100,000 for these capital outlay projects, that we will tackle the gutter system at State Road. A couple of years ago, we did the same thing at Clem North. And so State Road is up, very, you know, identical buildings. So with $100,000, we think we could do that, but we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more.
Hey, Brian, on the, on the equipment, do we primarily own, own the vehicles or do we lease them?
Yeah, we own them all. We purchase them all.
And you, and do we, do we pay outright or just because I?
Yep. It's different than buses because buses are aidable. So we do that over a five-year. They give us aid over five years for the buses. But for maintenance vehicles, there is no aid. It's all 100% on us.
Okay. And can you, can you hand, are you trading in the, the vehicles that are older?
Yeah, since all of them are used in plow work, the, we're scrapping them just because the bodies are falling apart. We're not really, we're not getting anything trading value because the, we're putting salters on the back of most of them. And they're just, it's destroying the bodies. There, there's not much, we'd have to turn them over every probably three to four years to get any kind of value because of the salt killing it. Yeah, no problem. So you could see here on the line item side of our facility's budget, salaries just a little under 3%. We've had some retirements and turnover, so we're below the contractual amounts there because of that. All of our, the equipment line you see going up about $100,000 because we have a fleet of over 50 vehicles and there's price increases. So added money there to, to help that. And it's just not with the vehicles as well. So, you know, many times we're sitting here and you see the consensual staff at Spry drive by on their auto scrubbers and things like that. We're, you know, those are also overfilling the price, price pinch as well. You know, all the natural gas, electricity keeping steady. And then the BOSI's cost, you see they're slightly up $5,000. Overall, the facility's budget, we're looking at about 2.5% increase over last year. Questions on the facility's budget? All righty. Moving along to our transportation. You might be able to spot one of our principals in this photo. It's kind of a word of Waldo. But '23, '24 transportation budget is, I think, very unique because we're seeing a lot of price spikes all over. But we got three major things going on. Salaries, you think. Are you trying to find who it is?
He needs readers.
He was there at that night for his kids. So salaries, you're going to see not a real impact on the budget for salaries. Why is that? Well, because there's a shortage in staffing. And so when you look at the numbers, when we, when we do it and build up from current staff and taking into account the fluctuations of who's retiring, who's not, who's in training, how many positions do we have in reserve and really build that from the ground up and then add the appropriate salary increases, we're well behind previous years. I think there's no, no beating around the bush with that. We have far less drivers than we have in years past and the budget is reflecting that. Contractual, small increase because we do outsource some of our transportation. We do have a private contractor as well that we outsource some special education runs for. Their cost adjustment as part of that contract is going up. And then you would think with how fuel spiked, we would see that go up. But we're maintaining that budget line because we have fewer overall runs. We're not, we don't have to increase that budget line as well. So on the line items, you're looking for not even a percent increase on the salary side. And then the $10,000 increase on the contractual side is for that private bus contract, their, their adjustment to their contract for the runs we have with them. So overall, transportation is less than a 1% increase over last year. Questions on transportation?
I, I just wondered, how do you manage then with fewer runs? I mean, how does that work?
Every day is scrambled. I, we've, you know.
That's a lot of pressure, right?
Yeah, we've made some difficult decisions that I'm sure, you know, you know, given the situation, we would not want to have, you know, double up the Thomas Willing kids. You know, if Spry was closer to Schrader, be doing the same thing to them as well. But distance is the enemy there per se when it comes to it. So we've made adjustments like that. We've really looked at some of our outline runs as well. You know, even though school doesn't run, we don't have any runs between the mid-days. We've got a lot of field trips and things going on. We've had to back off on that too because we're, you know, the bus driver burnout is a concern. So, you know, we're finding on athletic trips and some other things that, you know, five years ago, there'd be a list of 25 people signed up to bid on a, on a, on a, you know, athletic run on the weekends and, you know, maybe we're getting two or one because, you know, it's just, yeah, I want to work part-time. You know, I want to keep my hours down. So, you know, those are other challenges that we're trying to do and, you know, piece some things together on a day-to-day basis. I, I mean, we're lucky. The, the group over there is doing a fantastic job. We had two mechanics and two office staff members on the road today. So everybody's, you know, chipping in. We've had days when it's been, you know, who doesn't have a CDL? Well, you're answering the phones. Everybody else is driving. That's happened. You know, there's horror stories in other districts. We've been, you know, knock on wood, better off than I would say some of our comparison. We've been, you know, knock on wood, better off than I would say some of our comparisons, but we're, you know, we have conversations with our neighboring districts. We talk to Penfield all the time about what can we do to help each other out? Hey, we're driving through your district, you're driving through ours, you know, we got this kid that popped up, would you guys be able to take him? So we're, we're doing stuff like that on an ongoing basis to help. Next up, debt service. Debt service, really fun stuff, heading out and thinking what's coming on the horizon. So a couple of things on debt, interest. You know, when we borrow for buses, it's short-term, it's five years, it's not a, you know, a 15-year capital project, it's not long-term. So we are planning that our short-term bus borrowings, our rates will be higher regardless of our economic position. That's just where things are headed, so you'll see a little bit higher when we go to bid out those rates. We're expecting those to increase. This will be the last year of two projects coming off after 2324. That will be replaced by the 2018 project coming on the books. 2018 project will be finished next fiscal year, so those two projects come off, the 2018 project comes on the books when we're talking, planning for 2425. And then on the transfer side, I alluded to this. I know when I was in Albany last week, I brought it up at every single meeting, hopeful that the legislator and the governor will agree to increase the transfer to capital. Those, those are great little projects. We've been doing for about nine years now, these 100,000 projects, helps get something done and gives us the aid the following year. These are things that we would normally do as part of the facilities budget, but this gives us an aid stream for those. The cost of construction is just up so much and considerably, it's hard to do anything for $100,000. You know, nobody is, no construction firm, no plumbers, no HVAC, electricians are coming out for these 100,000-hour projects because it's just not worth it. So it limits what you can do. So we're hopeful, you know, if they can extend that to 250, which is what might be on the books for a couple of proposals, would really, really help. So you can see here what our debt service is doing. We have our principal construction debt, then our bus debt. You see the interest going up as a projection. And then just highlighting that transfer to capital, that's the two where, you know, when we finalize the budget, we come back and have that discussion. We, we have a priority list if that does happen with the facilities team, there's some things they'd like to tackle for that amount as well. And then just to point out, something that's unique is the transfer to federal, that 240,000, what is that? That is just a pure accounting. That is our best guess, our best budget of what our share, the local share would cost for summer special education program. The rest is picked up through state and federal sources. So it's all done out of the federal fund. This is, we're just transferring over our estimated local share of the cost of that. Questions on anything regards to the debt? Central services, our preliminary budget. What is central services? That is, if I can have everybody look, go from Brian's office that way, it's half of the third floor. The other half of the floor when it comes to instruction, but just for a visual. I think you might be surprised what is the largest part of this budget when we get to the end of it. So it is our BOSI's, all of our, you know, operation software, like our financial and HR softwares, our BOSI's administrative budget, business and HR, all, our auditing services, our legal, conferences, tuition reimbursements, school association dues, all of our tax collection, public information, all the support for AVTV throughout the district as well, our newsletters, all of that central website hosting as well, makes up this budget, along with the superintendent, the board of education as well, and liability insurance as well, both student accident, general accident liability. All the automotive insurance though goes to the transportation budget because that is aidable through transportation aid. And then additional insurance premium as necessary, so we, we purchase a rider for cybersecurity, which you'll see has increased our accident insurance, our general liability insurance as well. So those are the things that go into this, this part of the budget, but you'll notice here is the line item, the largest, I'll point out, is the BOSI services. And so the BOSI's administrative budget is a requirement in New York State that we have to pick up the tab on. BOSI sets their admin budget and the component districts pick it up. We are the largest component district of Monroe One BOSI's, hence we have the largest share of their budget, so it's about $1.6 million. The additional $300,000 is all those operating softwares I talked about. So the largest part of our central services budget is our BOSI's administrative budget. Couple changes here, you see the insurance, the 5% is our cybersecurity premiums increased, don't want to lose that. We engage with an extra rider on top of our liability insurance just for extra coverage there, but we've seen some spikes there. Normally our insurance is like a 2%, we're part of a consortium, statewide consortium. We have pretty good rates, but with the cybersecurity, it's kind of a little bit outside that control since it's outside of the consortium. And then just a little change on instructional salaries, we got a retirement that was considered an instructional salary in the HR department, that is gone, so you see a reduction there, but that is now replaced by somebody who's in civil service title, not a certificated title. So you see the increase a little bit more on the non-instructional salaries. You know, with, with smaller budgets, a flop of one person, you see, has a little bit bigger percentage increase than, and a larger, what we're talking about, you know, less than 25 staff members.
Brian, if I recall, and we had Chris Callahan talk about OWL, that's one of the programs we house in-house and we used to send people to BOSI's, that would be substantially higher if we didn't have OWL, correct?
So this is a different part of the BOSI's budget, yep. That BOSI's line item, we have like 25 BOSI's line items, there's pretty much one in every kind of the budget group. That is part of the special education BOSI's budgets, we have that separate. The BOSI's admin is, is their administration, it's all their retirement costs for BOSI's employees, you know, anything you can think of, administrative overhead that BOSI's has, they pull it all together, divide it back out to all the districts. That's what this BOSI's admin is.
But when you get to that part.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It's worth noting when we get to that part.
It will be, yes, workshop number two. Don't want, don't want to rush to the end.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, well, yes, we will, and this year especially, you'll, we'll see that impact. So questions on, on this part of the budget? All righty. And next up, we are 1,600 employees, so benefits is a decent chunk of that. Actually, you could go a little bit further because our FICA costs and our pension costs actually are based on everybody. So you can throw all the substitutes and seasonal employees in there as well when we talk, you know, social security tax and Medicare tax and, you know, it, there's very few people that don't sign up for the retirement system when we get them in, especially our seasonal employees. You know, we always say, hey, sign up because you never know what career path you're going to go down, so you might as well start in the system now. So all those employees as well, not just our permanent, you know, you think of the 1,600. So there are some additional costs here because of that. So just wanted to take a look at the major areas of our employee benefits budget. Workers' compensation, I'll point out first, we have a large increase year-to-year, about 9%. It's higher than recent years because we have two, two claim years in the last five-year, our rates are based on a five-year average that are pretty high. One of them is a new year coming onboard, so it'll take a few years to work out, so you'll see a large increase there. We actually are also the largest member of that consortium, the Workers' Comp Consortium as well, so our bill is usually the largest one as well because we have the most employees that are kicking into the Workers' Comp Consortium. TRS, pleasantly surprised, that went down considering the stock market is 86% of the income for the retirement system. See that rate go down, I will touch on that a little bit more. ERS did increase, which I would have thought both systems would have, but that one went up a little bit. On the healthcare side, competition, I think was a good thing this year. Our Medicare plans for retirees helped lessen the overall healthcare costs when you compare to active employee rates and what's trending. You see a lot of 8% to 10% increases, ours is lower because our retiring Medicare plans actually reflect the 65 and older. A lot of that has to do with two very large groups are now entering the New York State market and has gotten Exelis's attention. So competition's a good thing there to help with rates. Dental, flat, not, we're self-insured there, no cost increases budget to budget. And then on our ancillary plans, projected increases for HSA funding as well as employees receiving healthcare buyouts. We have seen during open enrollment, more employees taking the buyout, so we're looking at increasing the line item there.
Are you predicting then that the 100% or whatever percentage it is of max HSA for high deductibles is going to be going up? Is that what that HSA is referring to?
No, we're, we're seeing more people going into that plan, so that's where the increase in HSA funding is coming from. Generally, every year, you know, more and more people are looking at it, especially younger employees, people that want flexibility. So that's where we're predicting that.
So it's the shifting numbers of people choosing those plans?
Yep.
A fluctuation in the actual HSA.
Correct, rather than, you know, saying, oh, it was 3,000 last year, now it's 3,300. It's more about, oh, more people are picking up to 3,000 is what we're projecting. So Workers' Comp, it's come a long way from this photo right here. I don't know if OSHA would approve of this. So what's going on there? So it's 0809, you can see we've had this historic line item increase. We used to be barely over a half a million dollar budget line item. It's going to be almost $1.4 million now in that amount of time, 122% increase. Like I said, it's going to be, you're going to, you'll see it when we get to the numbers, 9% over last year because of those two high claim years, that new one coming on spiked the five-year average, so our rate increase is higher. Which is normal, there's anomalies every year, some year, you know, the year before that, bottom out, we had nothing and then, you know, a spike this year. On the retirement systems, TRS down, ERS up. So we're projecting our ERS bill to be $2.9 million. That's a 1.5% increase over last year. And then our TRS bill coming down to $7,695, that's about a half a percent decrease over last year. And we'll see those comparisons side-by-side as well. And then when you look, the retirement systems are about 30% of our benefit portfolio. I always like to show this comparison as many years as I could smash onto a slide, going back to 2000. I also like to pick 2000 because that's when all of, everybody, not all of us, 24 members, when the rules went into place because the comptroller was running for governor, he wanted possibly to get more support. At the 10-year mark, you didn't have to contribute anymore and so that was adopted by both TRS and ERS. So you can see what those low rates were, also coming off of the dot-com explosion of the 90s, so historically low rates, so I just like to show that as comparison because we'll never see those again. So the rate this year is actually 9.76% of our entire payroll. And when we talk about payroll, that is all teachers, all administrators, all teaching assistants. Everybody who's certified can be in the teacher's retirement system. So it's really three groups, add up what we think their salaries are going to be, 9.76% of that, that's where we get our budgeted number for. The average going back to 1978 is 10.81%. So that's what that bar represents, is the average rate for the teacher's retirement system. So we're, this year for TRS, we are under the average. We are the exact opposite for the employee's retirement system, which is up next. The average for the employee retirement system is 9.86% going back to 1978. Once again, you see those very small percentages in the early 2000s. This year, we're at 13.1% of payroll. Do the exact same exercise, get all those salaries of everybody who's in ERS, that is generally our civil service staff, multiply it by 3.1%, give myself a little buffer for making a mistake, and that is our budget for the employee's retirement system. We are above average this year compared to the historical average for the employee retirement system. Two nuances difference, the employee retirement system is theoretically controlled by one person, the New York State comptroller, where TRS is governed by a board with multiple representation on it, so. Questions on any of that historical of where we're at and how it compares? All righty. So here is by the numbers for our line items on the budget side. You can see ERS, 2.4% dollar increase over last year. TRS, about a percent, when you look at the dollars, down from last year. Because even though the rate came down, we're still running it on projected higher salaries because it is salaries, so it's not a pure savings when rates come down because some of the salary increase eats into that year-to-year. FICA, this is the one that probably is actually now, you'll see it in the next slide, is our second largest piece of the pie because that is directly tied to all salaries. It doesn't, doesn't matter if you're in the TRS or ERS system, if you work for us, you're running a FICA payroll tax on it. So, you know, even the summer kids, anybody else, this is a cost. So you can see that one's a little higher, you see that 4%, it's a blended rate because a lot of that has to do with, you know, seasonal workers, minimum wage, substitutes, you know, and blended in with all the other salaries as well. You see the Workers' Comp at 1.45 million. That 9%, that is, you know, $120,000 increase over last year when you run that. No change in the life insurance and unemployment. Health, you see just a touch under 5% and a lot of those increases mitigated solely by the Medicare savings. Because we actually have more active retirees on the books than active employees right now. When I first started, we were about 20 more active employees than we had retirees. Now we're about 150 to, I think, 160 more retirees on the books than employees, active employees. So a real demographic shift there. So they're becoming a larger chunk of the pile. Have multitude of retirees that we correspond with that have more time as a retiree than as an active employee. Got a couple that are approaching the centennial as well. So it was nice to see many of them this year because we're finally, when we do our retiree Medicare meeting, we had about 110 retirees come back. It was good to see the numbers on that come, bounce back after COVID, they're not having that for a couple of years. The dental, $217, that is just rounding, put a zero in the end of when we do the calculation. And then you see the buyouts in the HRA plans as well, those increases there. Overall, less than 4%, 3 and 3/4% increase. And when you look at the pie chart, health insurance obviously is the largest group, but now FICA has just beat out the TRS as the second largest piece of the benefits pie.
So Brian.
Yeah.
You know, but when I looked at all the data you gave us, right, the healthcare one is the one that to me is the most concerning because even though it's only going up 5%, it's 5% of a big number, it's 1.4 million. If you look at '21 to '22, that was 1.7 million, you know, and is there an end in sight for this? Probably not, and how do we address this on an ongoing basis?
Well, if you compared us to the market, we're well below because of the consortium. We are the largest consortium Exelis has in all of the districts banded together in terms of contracts. So we're, we have purchasing power. We have moved the consortium to self-insured, to keep rates down, to avoid a lot of the ACA taxes. Saved about ten million dollars as a consortium there. So we're doing what we can, but with sixteen hundred employees, benefits is always going to be numero two after salaries. Because a lot of, I mean, we're not making widgets, we can't automate it. It's, you know, we're pretty standard in line with everybody else. But on the retiree side, that, that increasing number of retirees has actually helped us become a little bit more forceful in the market. It's made us more attractive, why we have two other competitors now in the area. And it has brought costs down. But we're always looking at things as a group countywide because, you know, there's little, are there little solutions we can do district to district? Sure, and we tackle that through negotiations. And we've made some of those strides, and we've mitigated a lot of costs or through negotiations and through partnering with win-win and many of our bargaining units. But there are, I think, looking at it from a totality standpoint through our RASH partners and what can we do there is where we would start to bring that down a little bit. I don't think we'll ever bring it down, but, you know, squash the increase. You know, not make an exponential graph out of it, but make a linear graph out of it.
And it's tough because that's what attracts, you know, we're trying to attract staff and having a healthy and beneficial healthcare program.
It's the, you know, the yin to my yang, who's normally sitting there, about attracting employees versus saving money.
Yeah. So you want to make, I know, so we've got that, we need to make sure.
Because that's where, that's where the marketplace is right now, you know. And it's not just us, it's, you know, private sector throwing out tons of stuff. But when we react to it, we have to compete with that on a market basis because, you know, we're public, we still, it's the same pool of people we're trying to recruit, you know. I'll take bus drivers, for example, because the CDL is the most, you know, that is the most, you know, desirable piece of paper in America right now, anybody who could drive for anything. So like right now, you know, logistics is the fastest growing group. So they're just throwing different perks at, at those employees, you know, faster than we can kind of keep up with, with that. But then, you know, maybe three, four years, economic downturn, they'll pull them away, and then those people might come back to us. So it's trying to ebb and flow a little bit with that as well. We're always consistent. We're, I mean, kind of with the recession proof of, of the marketplace. You know, we do have stable things we could offer people that, you know, you might see that volatility a little bit more in the private sector.
I mean, that's kind of the handoff of salaries, is that they're willing to take a lower salary, too. Because it's not right now, it's not for the, not for the appreciation.
Right, and, you know, we, we always have that back and forth about that. Dan, Mike, did I get into the weeds?
Yes, yes, no. I didn't think there was an easy answer. It's just concerning, yeah. Across, across the whole country.
Right.
Until we go to, you know, government-sponsored healthcare, like most European countries, right, we're all going to be burdened with this.
Yeah, and, you know, every state's a little bit different. I'm part of a statewide organization, or not statewide, excuse me, nationwide organization. And I was, that's the one I love reading the most every morning on the roundup because just so interesting of what other states do and how they do it, you know. What does that person in North Carolina in my position do? Because it's kind of like, the state just tells you. They fill out the forms forty, but here I got to fill out thirty forms to get something. So, you know, it's, it's interesting to see the differences. So total budgets tonight, a little over ninety-two million for this first batch on the budget workshop on the operational side per se. So upcoming next workshop, too, we're going to get to the instructional areas, we're going to talk student services, we're going to break down athletics, a lot of the community education stuff that Ben and Brian spoke about earlier, and those programming that we do. Talk through instructional technology as well as part of workshop number two. A big thank you to our budget team members over transportation and Mr. Flood and Mr. Cunningham with facilities, safety and security, a big shout out to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions, anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice and thorough, brought it down. Yeah, it's very good, thank you.
And maybe by next time, we might have a little bit more detail on the one-house budgets that I could also update for workshop number two. I know they're coming out tomorrow with the assembly proposal and the Senate proposal was and how that compared to what the governor was proposing as well.
All right. And you're still up there with the treasurer's report, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, anybody want to look at the foundation formula?
No.
Let me know, I'll leave it for you.
New?
We're good, thanks.
I might need another hour to explain it.
Treasurer's report for January, you know, we're still investing heavily, trying to maximize our interest earnings. We are doing very well in comparison to last year on that. And then, you know, a couple grants got approved on the federal side. State is catching up on our payments for school lunch as well, and we received our STAR payment reimbursement from the state, so. Any other questions on anything there? The one, I do want to point out on the federal side on there, you see massive amount of expenditures, especially on the federal stimulus. The federal stimulus is, is, you know, they're, the reporting is extensive to claim that money. So what we do is we try to break that up. So this month, January, was the first month where we sent a report out. So you'll see that increase in money there for those grants in compared to the next ones. The next, or previous months and the following months.
With that kind of a motion to approve the January twenty-twenty-three treasurer's report as presented. So move Mike, second Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, nothing. Resolution to establish hours of the annual district meeting on the sixteenth.
Nothing changing there, six to nine at Trader, eight seventy-five Ridge Road, come join us.
Yeah, easy peasy. All right, motion to approve the resolution establishing the hours of the annual district meeting on the sixteenth at Trader. So move Shanna, second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven, nothing. And the legal notice.
Legal notice, got to publish four times, you see the dates there, and then the proposition as well for, that it's kind of broken down, is the proposition for the bus purchases included in that. So no changes to this one, just the, the date targets changed by the calendar cycle.
Motion to approve the legal notice for the annual election and budget vote.
So move Jen, second Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you done now?
I think so.
Oh, wow. Really? Thank you.
I think so.
Second reading of this calendar. There's no changes?
No changes from last meeting, so unless anyone has any questions, I think we're ready to.
Sorry, when, so after we approve this, this calendar, we approve it, does that then get posted on the website?
Cindy will post it probably.
Okay. Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Motion to approve the second reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. Charlie, motion, second, Mike, all in favor? What are we on, June?
Juul. We have the resolution, I think, right? I think we were all briefed on the resolution.
Do you want to say anything about it, or is it?
No, just that it, in order for us to accept the money paid for by the lawsuit on the Juul settlement that we, you know, participated in, the board needs to pass a resolution in order to accept that money. You know, we had explained again to us a little bit, but that we may not see this until later this year. You know, and it takes, there's a process, but the first step is the board needs to actually approve it.
Okay, got it.
Resolution.
So a motion to approve the Juul, J-U-U-L, resolution as recommended by our attorneys. So move Shanna, second Linda, all in favor?
All right, first reading of the board and clerk policies. So last week, we had the workshop that went through step by step all of the changes. I'll just share again that this is because Erie One BOSSE has taken our entire policy manual. They have revamped it, but now we have to look at it and Websterize it. So we openly discussed that at last week's workshop, changed a few things. So this is our first read once again of this section. Again, if it's law, we didn't need it in there, like we kind of cut some things out, so everything is transparent. And, yeah, so we would approve this section, and eventually we will get to the entire thing so that we can go back. Am I forgetting anything?
Yeah, no, we're, we are hopeful that by October, we can send the entire manual into Erie One so that they can read through it. And then they will send us any revisions that we need to keep in it or any changes that they see. Then we will repeat this whole process for the second read. So hope, our hope is that by a year from now, we will have this in place.
And then we'll be on a regular cycle, right, with reviewing?
Correct. They will take care of most of it, and they'll just, it really cuts our work down because they will just send us what needs to change, and so the process is much more streamlined.
I definitely appreciate, I appreciate all the hard work you guys put into that first.
No, no problem, and I think the workshops help because it's open, we're discussing it, you know. We still find changes that the policy committee didn't see that everyone else sees that makes sense, so it's, it's helpful. And hopefully it'll cut back on the kickbacks, too, the second time around, so.
All right, so with that, motion to approve the first reading of the board and clerk policies before sending them to Erie One.
Before we do that.
Oh, sorry.
There was one statement on page forty-one, which we weren't quite sure of. It's the resident within the district for a period of the past thirty days.
We are kicking that back to BOSSE, and they're going to let us know how to make it more clear, either our way, their way, or something in between.
Okay, perfect.
All right, motion to approve the first reading of the board and clerk policies before sending them to Erie One BOSSE for editing.
So move Jen, second, Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're on to our member highlights. So again, we have a lot of speakers that come and share a lot of different things, but those of us are on different committees, different PTSA meetings. So if there's anything else that each board member wants to highlight, now is the chance. So if anyone has anything pressing they want to start?
I'm going to start just to get it. Oh, do you want to go ahead?
No, 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 you're good.
Oh, you're good. So not much to say, other than I definitely, I really enjoyed the staff, the staff basketball charity. It was really, really fun, yeah. And I definitely plan on bringing, I don't want to, I don't know, I had no idea that that was going to be that fun, and I'm definitely going to bring like my, the rest of my family next year. The kid participation, too, like how much they cheered each other on, it was just the most, the funniest thing I think I've, I've ever seen. It was so funny. That was fantastic, and I just want to encourage people to sign up for Community Arts Day. They've released volunteer slots for that, so they need a lot of volunteers throughout the day for Community Arts Day, so.
Sign up for that. And then that's it?
No, you're good, and you took mine, so.
No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
Clem South PTSA met yesterday, a lot of the normal stuff just planning for the spring, but excitingly, they're, they've invited Jamison School for Irish Dance, and on Friday, do a little presentation, and my daughter's going to be in it, so I'm a little excited. So she gets to perform in front of all her friends, but it's just a way to kind of share the celebration of culture. And it's something that Jamison does where they kind of go all over Rochester, just kind of share the culture and the dance. So something, something special for the Clem South group, so.
I just, I was able to attend the Spry Family Evening last night, and I have to tell you, there were over five hundred people who signed up and came. It was packed, it was amazing, they had stations throughout the building, and it was great to see kids showing their parents around the building. It was volunteered, there were a ton of volunteers, there were many, many teachers who volunteered to do the stations. It was a great, great, great event. Mike, this is for you, labor relations next week, there's a RASH two update for the, for Monroe County. So that's at noon, I'll be there, so I'll be able to give you more information on that. And then one other thing, on Monday, March twentieth, Laura Crane is coming, and she is going to present to the, to the community on marijuana and beyond. It, she will be here for an entire day, she will have a breakfast meeting, she will train the members of WEN, and then do administration and staff in the afternoon, and a family or a parent presentation in the evening. All of the information is on the WEN website. I encourage people to attend the parent forum in the evening if they can. Much has changed with marijuana over the last twenty years, it's very concerning what's coming in front of our children, and that's all.
Thank you.
I just have one, DeWitt wrote, PTSA was last night, and they, for their book fair, they're going to have one of the child authors come to the book fair, which I think is pretty cool. So a best sharing with the other elementary schools for my colleagues here, that's it.
We visited Willink, the Al program and the building, and it was wonderful. We also visited State Road, wasn't it?
We did.
Between, I, I just, I can't tell you how much I love going to the schools.
It is one of the best parts of the job.
It is the best part, to see, you know, what's happening. I just, I feel so, to be able to do that, so.
Yeah.
We have one left, that's Schlegel, and that's it.
I've got that on my calendar, I don't miss it.
That's the last one, entrance rotation. Intercept that in.
Oh, and I went to the parents' meeting, the last one on Wednesday. My husband came with me because he never sees me. And so he came in, he really, he cares about, he, he supports what I do because he cares about Webster. So it was, it was great that he bought it, too, and he enjoyed it very much, thank you, Robert.
And just kudos for the, kudos for the walk through the other day, the hospitality extended to us. It's a great school, a great program, and really like what's going on over in the library as well.
Yeah, for sure, and thanks for inviting us on the chili cook-off day. I mean, I can't think of a better time to visit a school when there's food, so. Highly food motivated.
We all are.
Right, there were some spicy ones.
That's how I knew to avoid, I remember, people were wiping the floor, and I was like, not that one.
It wasn't the pumpkin, but there were a few, just the wording, I knew.
That's awesome.
I can't think of anything else.
Yeah.
Excellent, all right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which covers a lot. Barring any questions, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved, Mike, second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
And I believe our speaker is unavailable this evening, so we can bypass public comments. And let's see, so Tuesday, March eighth, we have our budget workshop number two, which we're all excited about after Brian's presentation today. And then April eleventh will be budget workshop number three, and our next regular business meeting is April eighteen. Unless there's anything I'm missing? I think so?
You're very good.
All right, motion to adjourn, please. Carol? Second, Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.